We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this morning, we have a presentation first, Health Renovation Project, and Roy Deedee is here to present that. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gloria, Roy Deedee, Health Department Division Director, and I have with me...
Chris Sawyer, Senior Office Manager, Administration.
We are here to talk about the renovation of the Center Street campus has resulted in us having to move our staff to two, out to two sites during the renovation project. Our Health Department was constructed over about forty years ago, and it is in need for renovation in its windows, single pane to double pane, HVAC system. Lighting is poor, and we're also going to be doing some tenant improvements, mostly with our Public Health Services and with WIC. The outcome from the renovation project will be increased energy efficiency, lower costs of operation, and better services to our clients. We have a, this Friday and Saturday, our Public Health Services, including WIC, will be moving to the site that you can see that's on the board, 1660 Oak Street Southeast. We will have services on Friday for clients, and we will be closed on the following Monday in the morning to allow staff to go ahead and unpack and get ready for clients. Then we will be moving the rest of the Center Street campus, Adult Behavioral Health, Environmental Health, Vital Statistics, and Administration on the following Friday and Saturday. Same process in place, we will be open for services. On the following Monday, we will open at 7:50 Front Street Northeast for those services around one, giving our staff time to unpack and get ready going in the morning. Our Health Department move team works in conjunction with the Marion County Project Team, and this focuses on our move out of the two sites. We have been, you have provided a media release that went out in the Statesman Journal yesterday. We've done flyers, we have banners at our sites. The final construction is done, and we are starting to pay for, we'll be paying for the lease agreements at our two new sites. The County Project Team is led by Colleen Coons-Chafin. There are some consultants, and we've had exceptional help from Karen Galvin Price on these lease agreements. We're moving roughly seventy-three regular staff to our Front Street site and sixty-six staff to our Oak Street site. And we hope that the interruptions in services will be minimal. It's a pretty large move for us. And you can see the locations of the two sites.
Thank you. Anything to add? So besides putting a notice of press release out, so people drive up, are there going to be signs along the roadway? Or telling people where else they might need to go if they, if they don't read the paper?
Yes, we have, we have a banner on our building, and we will have a...
We work with Public Works.
Can you, you need to put, talk in the microphone, otherwise the TV camera doesn't pick you up.
We worked with Public Works to put an electronic street sign out that will notify people when they drive up. We've also set up a number specifically for people to call for information that has a recording and where to reach specific departments and where we're moving, when we're moving, all that vital information that they need to know.
So the street sign's going to put that phone number on or some information? So they don't, it doesn't just say, "Don't come here." It says, "Don't come here, and here's how you find out where to go."
It says, "For further information," and it has the number, yes.
All right, good. That's great. All right, any comments?
Well, Roy, could you tell me one more time? So when will operations quit on Center Street? And when will you be in these new facilities?
For the Oak Street move this Friday, we will have up, we will be open for services. The move will occur Friday and Saturday with Facilities and IT completing up over the weekend. Monday morning, the 21st, will be closed in the morning only. So staff can, when they come in, they're going to have all these pack crates to unpack, et cetera. So it'll be till one, and then we'll be open.
All right.
The following week is the same arrangement. On the, we'll move the weekend, the 25th, 26th. We'll be open for services at 1:00 PM on the 28th, or as soon as staff get unpacked that morning.
All right. It's going to be an interesting, busy time, having gone through that. I wish you the best.
Moving is really never fun.
Well, Karen Galvin Price and other members of the Finance and Business Services that have been through it have been very helpful in this process, including Facilities and IT.
So I think it might have been Rod that said one of the side benefits of this is getting rid of years' worth of paper. And I know that happened to me when we moved out of Courthouse Square. And then when we moved back from MAPS to Courthouse Square, again, it was this gigantic purge of papers. So sometimes there's hidden benefits to things like this, too.
We have been using recycle bins constantly, purging. Karen's going to be busy putting stuff in surplus, et cetera. So it is a very busy time, as you know.
Very good. Any other comments? Appreciate you coming down this morning to let people know, and this is long overdue. So we're very excited that there's going to be improvements to Health Department building, and I think it will certainly benefit the public and the employees that work there. So even though it's an inconvenience as we move out, we're happy that it's happening.
We appreciate the opportunity to let the citizens know as well and the support you've provided to get us the Health Department renovated. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And I do have glasses now, so we're in business. So we have one person signed up under public comment this morning, J.C. Riggs. And yeah, that actually would be the best place to testify. So if you would just state your name and the community that you live in, and then...
So my name is J.C. Riggs. I live in Marion County, right outside of Silverton. I'm currently a hazelnut farmer, and I have a potential opportunity to become a marijuana grower and licensed through OLCC and to be a processor for the industry. I would love to move forward in my county to do that. And my potential business partners are also hazelnut farmers, well-established in the community, helped start the Oregon Garden. He's an amazing man in Verle Holden. He owns Holden Wholesale Growers. I was talking to Board Member, Mr. Sam Brentano? I'm sorry, if I pronounce it wrong, before the meeting, and he was letting me know that he thinks he had stopped this process, and I shouldn't look forward to this happening for the next two years and maybe put it off the vote. That would slow our process down if we were to move forward. My family would benefit greatly. You know, we're not farmers now in the marijuana industry, but we see a big opportunity. We see other people moving into the county, and I know about, from, they're saying that they would like to have... So the OLCC has set guidelines for residency requirements of four years. I'm a resident. I've born and raised in Oregon. I became a hazelnut farmer last year with the opportunity to buy my land. With this golden opportunity, it'd be nice to move forward financially. It'd be great. But I see other people moving into this Marion County from other countries. I know of someone from Israel that bought a $3.5 million farm, probably doing business, who knows how, but they're doing business in the Aurora area, so they're in Marion County. And that just strikes me odd that they bought a 25,000-square-foot facility, because I know the irrigation people that set up their drip systems, and they basically have a huge facility, and they have all their products already being in the dispensaries throughout Oregon. I don't need to say any names, but the mom and pop will be shut out. I know that there's big grass seed farmers and big ag out in the community, and I will not affect them in any way. I'm on seven acres. My property and my location, my planned site, is two acres back in a closed-in facility. I'm a greenhouse grower, but we would build a fence and be in all the regulations. I just want the opportunity to move forward. Financially, it's an amazing opportunity. Silverton, just this week, moved forward with the dispensary opportunity, and then on October 5th, it looks like it'll go through to be able to have a dispensary in Silverton. That is not my plan to be a dispensary owner. I'm just saying, my community is moving forward. I'm right outside of that community, and I would like the opportunity as well. And if you have any questions, I've been to every OLCC meeting. I will stay in compliance. Everything that they say, we will go by every guideline, and we'll be safe. I'm a father of five children. I have a nine-year-old to a 20-year-old. I have a senior in high school at Silverton. I have a freshman, and I have a fourth grader at Central High. We're not some bad entity trying to do cartels or mafia or anything like that. We're just farmers. And with it being legal in the state of Oregon, I would like the opportunity to grow it and sell it to dispensaries legally.
Well, thank you. I think we're going to be having that discussion next week here, and we do have a work session coming up on Monday, correct? So there'll be more opportunity for us to have those conversations. I appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Any questions, comments? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak under public comment? Didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, then we will move to consent calendar, and Kim, is it Sam's? Okay. Commissioner Brentano.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. And it includes, under Board of Commissioners, OLCC applications with recommended approval for Alice Wine Company LLC Silverton Health. Approve Amendment Number Two to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Health and Sciences University to add $128,500 to the Cocoon Project and extend until September 30th, 2016. Approve Amendment One to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Oregon Department of Human Service to add $94,015 to the access program and extend to September 30th, 2016. Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Eleven to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Shamawa Indian School to add $391,773 for the school resource officers, and that extends until June 30th, 2016. Tax Collector, approve an order authorizing cancellation of uncollectible personal property tax accounts. And that's the last one.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second to approve these items? Any discussion on any of them?
Sure. Madam Chair, this is the first reading and motion that I've actually used electronic device to do our work today, and I want to thank our staff for getting us to this point.
You were able to keep up?
It's right there.
Oh, okay, well, good. Well, the other, the two of us will catch up with you next week.
So for those people watching, seeing me on my computer, I'm actually following along with our work here.
We thought you were just playing solitaire or something like that. So it's a good thing you clarified.
So everybody, so the camera can see it, see it's right there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's a bit small, but we'll figure that out.
I can see it.
All right, fine.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Those items are approved. Okay, we have two items under action today, no public hearings. First item, under Board of Commissioners, is to consider approval of a proclamation designating September 17th through 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week in Marion County. We have representatives here from the Daughters of the American Revolution. And yes, that would be great to go over there. So is it Day Westeen? Did I get your name right? Okay, Shemekah de Chapter. Good morning. Thank you for being here. This is always a wonderful occasion when you come and talk to us about the Constitution, so...
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity to come and receive a proclamation from you.
So tell us why you're here and about the...
My name is Day Westeen. I am the Regent of Shemekah de Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, here in Salem. And we would request a proclamation designating September 17th through 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week here in Marion County.
And tell us, what does the Shemekah de Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution do? Give us a little background about your organization.
We are an organization of women 18 years and older who can trace their lineage directly back to someone that helped with the Americans for the Revolutionary War or a patriot that served in it, or somebody that helped the patriots.
Very good.
We promote education, patriotism, and historic preservation.
And where else have you reached out to to have these proclamations done?
The Governor. The Mayor was unavailable, so she was on vacation this week or something like that, and not in the office, and couldn't fulfill our request, so...
So we're it then, for locally? Well, very good.
Other than the Governor.
Well, that's for the state, so we'll do that for the county. Okay, questions or comments about the Constitution?
I do. First, and I don't know if she's a member or not, our own Gloria Roy was talking about her lineage clear to French-American, French-Indian war and revolution. So that's pretty cool, and trace that back. You should be a member. And in preparation for the day, so I was looking for a book yesterday, ran into, went into the book bin close by here, and this book jumped out at me, and it happens to be just excellent. It's a quartet, and it's got Washington, Madison, Hamilton, and John Jay. And the author, John Ellis, is showing how they pushed the Constitution from the Articles of Confederation. And I was in bed, and you can see I got fairly far. It's more than a little interesting, and they had to finally shut it down. But what I got so far that I didn't really realize is how much George Washington was pushing that as Commander of Revolutionary Forces, saw that the Articles of Confederation didn't work. There was no money, and nobody paying troops, nobody food, ammunition, et cetera. And you've probably all heard of stories of how brutal, rough it was. I just, when I fell asleep, I was just in the section where they were disbanding the Continental Army at the end of the war. They didn't even pay them anything. They gave them some script. Robert Morris, who I'm finding out was a character behind the scenes, using his own money, paid the officers three months, and that's all they got. The script became valuable, as I know later on. But anyway, just by coincidence and seeing what we had today, pretty good source of where they drove the formation. The big thing was states like Virginia. After the treaties signed, all the land of the, to the Mississippi became part of Virginia, and they liked that just well. But like Rhode Island sitting there, well, we sent people and died and everything, and did we just do that for your benefit? And then, of course, a big war debt. So I'll finish it pretty soon. It'll be available. But it certainly shows how brutal the conditions were and how we would have gone into anarchy and just individual states, European style, and all the different conflicts that could, without these guys, these gentlemen figuring out that we need something more, so...
Very good.
Yeah.
I'm impressed.
Oh, are you? I could go on, but I'd probably bore you to death, but it is a good one.
You didn't bore me. I just, you think of those days, and you kind of, I know this is about me, I don't know how you feel, but you think, okay, I would have loved to have, you know, gone back. And then you think of, you hear about what the conditions, and uh-uh. These, I mean, you just talked about an example of giving your life and fighting for something that's so important without expecting anything in return. And great men, and we're thankful for it. And I think so many times, we just, we just assume. And thanks for sharing that, Sam, and thank you for what you ladies do as well.
And let me just add my comments, too, that, first of all, thank you all for coming and reminding us each year of the value of the Constitution. It certainly is a model for the world. The history of it, as Commissioner Brentano described, is that a lot of people go back and they think that the Declaration of Independence is kind of it, you know? And it does express our liberties, and it is a very important document. But a lot happened after the Declaration was signed, and the Articles of Confederation just weren't working. And the Constitution, I believe, was divinely inspired. It is such an amazing structure that they were able to figure out. And these concepts that we take for granted, that we teach our children about, checks and balances and separation of powers and the Bill of Rights and all the other things that got added to it, have been not only part of our history, but I think that they have set a standard for how people can govern themselves under Republican form of government with democratic, small-D principles that we follow. And so it's so important that we continue to teach our children and as a self-governing nation that we, as voters, understand how this structure works and what our role is in it. And so I just am very pleased that we're here today declaring this Constitution Week and approving this resolution. Proclamation, sorry.
Madam Chair, before I make the motion, we wish the whole room was full with students today to understand and be, help be educated in what we're talking about. But I'll make a motion that we approve of a proclamation designated September 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week in Marion County.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, so we'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we have, do we give them one copy? And then we have another, we have a couple fancy copies that we're going to sign, and we'll sign them here, and then we'll let you take one with you so that you'll have it. Is that, will that work?
Thank you.
Okay. So let's see. Commissioner Cameron, would you like to start?
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you. In the matter of observing September 20, September 17th through the 23rd, 2015, as Constitution Week in Marion County. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on Wednesday, September 16th, 2015. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law, and...
Whereas we celebrate our heritage as a country bound together by fidelity to a set of ideas and a system of governments first laid out in America's Constitution, the product of fierce debate and enduring compromise. Our nation's Constitution has guided our progress from thirteen to fifty United States that stretch from sea to shining sea. And whereas September 17th, 2015, marks a 228th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and...
Whereas this week, we reflect on the basic rights and responsibilities of citizenship, the founding documents from which they were drawn, and the extraordinary legacy of progress they have enabled. Let us forever uphold the ideals the framers enshrined in our Constitution, and let us never cease in our pursuit of the more perfect union they imagined so many years ago. And now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in us as Commissioners for Marion County, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And yes, I saw that, too.
You did. I knew you would.
Right, so the question is, we just, it says "American" rather than "America." So we'll sign this and give it to you, but if you want to trade it in for one that is perfect, later on, we can do that as well.
All right, thank you.
All right.
And I have a bookmark that has the preamble to the Constitution of the United States of America for you, for each of you.
There was one thing, and I can't do the math that they talked about and look at the book. And so Lincoln at Gettysburg was a little bit wrong and fourscoren seven years ago. And he did go to 1776, not, not when the Constitution was signed. Kind of interesting.
Yeah, that was dangerous giving you one with two lines. But you worked it out. I'm impressed, again. There you go. So Kim, make sure you have an address that you can mail this to before you leave, if you give an address to Kim, and then she can make sure you get one in the mail that doesn't have the typo on it.
I didn't think that had slipped by you, but...
Well, you know, I read through this beforehand, looking for, and that, and my eyes just went right over it, so... I actually found three mistakes when I was reading through it.
Certainly.
Four mistakes.
Thank you.
Here you go. There you go. Thank you.
We can make a little more formal picture if you'd like.
Yeah, if you'd like us to stand, we could come down and stand next to you. Let's do that. So we go from the Constitution to the Contract Review Board for waiving a minor informality in proposals submitted for Media Planning and Placement Services. And Camber Schlag is here, a little bit less philosophical, right?
We don't know yet.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camber Schlag. I am the Contracts and Procurement Manager located in Finance. And I am before you today to request the waiver of minor informalities. Public Works issued a request for proposals for Media Planning and Placement Services on August 5th, 2015. The RFP closed, closing deadline was August 25th. Six proposals were received in response to the RFP. In preliminary review by the Department Contract Specialist, it was discovered that three of the six proposals received contain minor informalities that need to be resolved prior to reviewing and scoring the proposals. The minor informalities are as follows. One of the firms did not clearly identify the language, English, Spanish, or both. They were submitting a proposal for, as specified in the RFP. However, their proposal did imply both languages. The firm did not identify the language properly. They were contacted in writing, and they responded in writing that their proposal was for both English and Spanish. One firm did not label the envelope containing their proposal with the wording specified in the RFP. One firm did not sign their proposal in blue ink and did not seal their proposal rates in a separate envelope, both of which were specified in the RFP. The county will remove the cost proposal from the proposal copies and withhold the cost proposal until the cost evaluation phase, should the proposal be submitted, be allowed to be reviewed. If the county waives these minor informalities, the impact would be that all six proposals could be then reviewed, resulting in a large pool from which to choose a firm or firms to provide these services. If the county does not waive these minor informalities, half of the group would be eliminated, and the county would have a much smaller pool to choose from. The county shall not allow an offerer to correct or withdraw an offer or an error in judgment. Prior to the award of the contract, the county discovers certain mistakes, and an offer after opening the county may take action on the mistakes. Pursuant to Marion County Public Contracting Rules, Section 20-0470, the county may waive or permit a proposal to correct a minor informality. So we are asking a waiver of minor informality, which is a matter of form over substance.
Thank you, Camber. And so you commented on the Spanish-English issue, so they've just told you verbally. Do they need to send anything else in writing for this?
They responded in writing that they, that they, they meant to have both, but they did not clearly say that.
And then the one that didn't label their envelope correctly, do we just ignore that when we waive it? You're not requiring them to send it in again, or another envelope, or whatever?
No, we just allow, by your signature.
And then you mentioned for the last one where it wasn't separate, you were going to separate it out?
Correct.
And, and just not provide it to the scorers?
Right. During the cost evaluation phase, we would provide that cost at that time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so any questions for Camber on this? This doesn't happen, well, it doesn't happen all that often. It seems like it's interesting that we had three of them in one batch, so maybe it speaks to media planners or something.
But they are certainly minor things like blue ink. I have a collection of pens. I should send them one to make sure they have the right utensils.
We had, we had an ink issue with you one time. You know that when we were, it was on a-
Unbelievable.
Right. It was a service award.
Hmm.
Grabbed the wrong color.
I just wanted to stand out for once.
Probably in red.
Black.
Yeah, it was black.
Could have worked.
Fortunately, there was a typo in the name, so we ended up doing the whole thing over and it all worked itself out, but these things do happen.
So, let's see, we go out of the Contract Review Board, do we?
No, we're on, we're still operating under the Contract Review Board. We've got that hat on and so we're being asked to approve, what are we approving?
Waiving minor informalities. And I'll make that motion, we waive those minor formalities in proposals submitted for Media Planning and Placement Services. One more comment, it does allow six proposals to be reviewed and I think it's certainly in the county's interest.
So then we would, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to waive the minor informalities. It looks like there's a discretionary action form that the board signs, so we're authorizing signature on this discretionary action form as, as evidence of this motion, right?
Fine.
Okay. So those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All right, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes our business for today. We are just completing our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow, Thursday, September 17th, at 8:00 AM is the City of Salem, Marion County Breakfast Meeting at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem. At 9:30 tomorrow, September 17th, is a work session about Grow EDC Inc. It will be held in the Silverton Conference Room up at the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. Then at 11:30 is a conference call, preparation for September 22nd meeting with Forest Supervisors and Detroit District Ranger. That will also be in the Senator Hearing, Silverton Conference Room, sorry. Monday, September 21st, at 8:30 is the Board of Commissioners Calendar Review in the Silverton Conference Room, followed by management update at 9:00 AM. A work session at 10:00 on the marijuana opt-out ordinance. And then at 11:00, an executive session pursuant to ORS 192662D, which is Marion County Law Enforcement Association Mediation Preparation. Those are all held in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor at Courthouse Square. Tuesday, September 22nd, at 8:30 is a meeting of the Community Corrections Board, also in the Silverton Conference Room. We spend a lot of time there. Followed at 10:15 by a regular board meeting of the Marion County Housing Authority in the Silverton Conference Room. At noon on September 22nd is the Champions for Children Luncheon. That will be held at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast in Salem. Tuesday afternoon, September 22nd, at 1:30 is a meeting with Forest Rangers and Detroit District Ranger in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square. Tuesday, September 22nd, at 6:00 PM, there will be a meeting of the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council here in the Senator Hearing Room and the Board of Commissioners is meeting with the council to talk about the future direction really of the solid waste system. And that's right here where we are right now. And then next Wednesday, September 23rd, we will be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. That afternoon, at 2:30, will be a meeting of the Governor's Reentry Council and that's held at the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training out at 4190 Omsfield Highway in Salem. So I was going to say this is the last time I would read the, this from a sheet of paper, but I think I'm actually going to have them print me a sheet of paper because I'm not sure I'm going to be able to navigate that as well, so.
It's right, right here, Commissioner.
Yeah, I know, but you're doing it with your finger and I'm going to be doing it on a computer with a mouse.
I was ready to-
That's why the iPad is better than a computer because you can just scroll right through it.
But then I'd have to have it up here, so.
I was going to be ready to jump on Commissioner Cameron when he couldn't find the proclamation, but I have to give him credit, he went right to it, ready to go. Pretty impressed.
Yeah, very good.
But the, the last issue with Camber though, it took all of her presentation for me to get it up and I think it's the internet connection. I don't have the new internet connection going, so.
It's not wired.
It took me a while to get that, that contract issue up, but it's working. We're getting there.
All right.
Let's just think of all the paper that we'll be able to save.
Oh, yeah.
And my notebook that's falling apart will not have to be replaced, although I know Environmental Services has a bunch of, or Garten has a bunch of them we could just recycle.
I was saying, Kim and Kristi won't have to haul notebooks down, but they'll have to haul laptops down, so.
Plug them in.
I don't know if it's sort of a trade-off that's pretty even or not, but won't have to copy so many pages and across the county and I know we do a lot of copying in our office, so that's going to save-
You ought to explain how much, like six different copies and I know that Kim fills this book every week and sometimes it's completely stuffed and then there's changes that have to all be made and taken up.
Right, and then papers come out, papers go in. And then she fills it up for John and he doesn't even show up, so, you know.
What a waste.
Right.
We do a lot of things for John.
He should appreciate us, shouldn't he? We need to, we need to pass a proclamation like this.
John, we're, your favorites are sitting down here talking about it.
Buttering him up again. I'm not going to fall for that. I do have one fun thing going on this week. My sister from Chicago is coming down, bringing what we call her entourage or friends from the area and they want to tour Oregon and, or the valley anyway, and really highlighting the Oktoberfest, so.
Nice.
She's showing up today and wants me to entertain her and with all my background with travel Salem and stuff, I ought to have something, but I gotta, I gotta dream up something for the afternoon.
Today?
Yeah.
Oh, I was going to say Thursday is a really good night to go to the Oktoberfest.
Well, they'll be there then. They're, they're going to go out to Lincoln City and, but they want dinner and a tour of Salem today.
Oh, we should go to Mission Mill.
Good food, too?
Well, there's a little place to eat there.
For lunch, but not for dinner.
Not for dinner. But you could go to a restaurant, then you go in Deepwood. That's always nice, too.
All right. Could show them our new office buildings.
True, you could do that. You could go to the Capitol.
New Health Center. They might enjoy that.
Yeah.
Anyway, they're looking forward to a good time. I hope I deliver.
Very good. Well, I've had a fun time yesterday and, and two more meetings this week. We have three new CEOs, if you will, in Marion County that work with reentry. So yesterday I met with Bruce Bailey over at Union Gospel Mission. Got a chance to meet, know him a little bit better and answer questions about what we're doing on reentry. And today, get to meet with Julie Huckstein out at Shemeckata Community College. She's the new president. And then tomorrow, I believe it is a meeting with John Reeves, who was just appointed as the, well, a couple months ago, as the Director of Community Action Agency, so that's part of my week besides writing a grant, which is always tedious, but rewarding at the end.
So last week, Ed Flick gave a presentation, was part of the presentation at SEDCor on the, on the, you know, preparing for the big earthquake and so I think those, you know, obviously it starts with businesses being, ourselves individually and then businesses being prepared. That was a big issue. This afternoon, I'm going to be going to French Prairie Meeting. Sheriff's Department will be there and Public Works will be there. And ODOT, talking about the rural, North Marion County rural traffic problems that we're having, the congestion and what's the long-term, some of the long-term plans for that. And then I get to actually teach the last class at, at Association of Oregon Counties College because I missed too many classes, so my penalty box is to teach a class on-
So you'll graduate?
This is makeup time.
Makeup time and the title is How to Be an Effective Public Servant. Pretty interesting as I-
This is attending county college meetings part of it.
As I prepare for that, I'm sure there's a few people-
Do you want us to come?
I'm sure there's a few people watching today that would probably have some input for me that I could do differently.
You'll need some examples.
Huh?
You need to, Gil, I'm sitting in the audience, so that would, he would, he would give definite perspective on that.
Yeah, it really, and you know, when you look up the definition of public servant in the, in the dictionary, it basically says someone who holds a position and that's how I'm going to start it out. We have enough people that just hold positions, so.
I'm glad you didn't stare at me during that. Thank you.
No, no, no. And, and then I'm going to go on to talk about the servant part of it and serving others and how do you do that and what are some of the challenges and roadblocks and obstacles to doing that. So I'm, I'm kind of excited about it. I haven't finished my presentation and HP's up there saying, do you have your PowerPoint ready for me? And I said, I'll probably give it to you Friday afternoon.
He's trying to find time within the stuff I'm giving him, I think.
I, I think this is only the second time I've asked him to do anything from a PowerPoint standpoint, so I'm going to tell him to bump you if he needs to.
Yeah.
I'm teasing.
He can. We don't have anything big coming up till next Tuesday, so.
So it just hit me what I'm going to do tonight and I don't know, I didn't think it right off. This is a Wednesday and they have Sunset in the Garden on Wednesdays, so how about taking them there for a dinner and sunset time?
Yeah, that's nice.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I'd like to eat there, too.
Right.
All right.